We called the special meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Ghaleen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for putting up with us. Our interviews with potential town attorneys took a little bit longer than what we thought it would, so excuse the timely... And then I couldn't find my right book, so that's where the majority of the time was. This time we'll do the first call to the public, call to the public, public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have one slip wishes to speak. If anybody would like to speak, please fill out the card. If you don't want to fill out the card, raise your hand, and I'll just talk to you. Robert Chappell? Now, I knew it. Soon as I said it wrong, I knew, Bob, I was wrong.
Robert Chappell, but most people call me Mike. I'm a resident of Florence and have lived here since September '08. My issue tonight, I have actually two, I reviewed the budget from this year and then looked at the tentative budget for 2016, and I see a 40 percent increase Parks and Recreation funding. That's rather high in my estimation. I'm assuming that most of that is going to cover the operation of the Aquatics Center. I'd like to know if there's a Plan B if you exceed that half a million dollar increase in Parks and Recreation. My second issue is, I didn't come through First Avenue to come to this meeting tonight because I'm tired of looking at the rundown properties on that street. It's embarrassing and disgusting, and I've lived here since September '08. I've heard all the excuses. These are absentee owners, the people rent, but I never see anything done to correct the issue. You go to other parts of Florence and you'll find a lot of the same things. Mattresses in the yard, abandoned cars, trash. Now, there have to be some code violations involved here that aren't being enforced. I brought friends here thinking about wanting to move, and they said, "Well, take me for a ride in downtown Florence." I did. And when we went by some of these properties, their first reaction were, "Oh, my gosh, you mean these are allowed to look like this?" So I raised that issue. If there's any way you have some slush money in the budget to do something about these properties, I think all of us would appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'll call, close call to the public. New business?
Item four, new business. A, Resolution Number 1527-15, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the Town of Florence for fiscal year 2015-2016. Adopting a tentative annual budget, setting forth the received expenditures and the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes, giving notice of the time for the public hearing for taxpayers on the adoption of the final budget, adopting the budget in accordance with the state imposed expenditure limitation, and voter-approved excess amount, declaring an emergency.
Who's going to talk about Mike or you, Charles?
I am, sir. So, Mayor, Council, the budget was brought to you all two times before in work sessions. We discussed it with you all, went through, we added and changed a number of items that you asked us to do so. In addition to that, the Budget Committee has gone through the budget over the last few months. We are prepared to answer any other questions that you all may have at this time.
Does any member of the council have any questions of Charles or Mike? John?
Yes, I have a question. I guess this would be for our attorney. One of the questions we asked at the work session was about the legality of transferring, supposedly $900,000 CFD to the Herd Fund.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, I believe there were a few questions that came up during that work session, and as a follow-up to that, we did follow up with a consultant who put together the study. He confirmed, I believe, that the restriction is mainly that the development impact fee be spent in the service area and for a project that's on the plan, which I believe is what we discussed in the special meeting, and that that payment would be consistent. And I independently looked at the statute and conferred with Mike, and it looks consistent. The statutory language for expenditure, the fees, requires that it be used, which is a pretty broad term, although there's no mention of reimbursement specifically as that kind of text is spelled out in the statute. The statute's broad enough that it appears like this would be consistent with both the code, the town's development code that addresses impact fees, and the state statute.
Well, what about the impact fee was not collected in that area? The impact fees were collected out in Anthem and the roads built over here on Divergent Dam.
Mayor, members of the council, I believe the service area for the transportation service area is town-wide, within the entire municipality. Development impact fees cannot be spent on maintenance or operation, and as far as the fees that were collected prior to 2012, there may have actually been fewer restrictions on those than fees more recently collected. But if I'm not mistaken, I believe the service area for transportation, which I believe would include roads, covers, to be expended, covers the entire municipality boundary.
I have, I guess a follow-up question to Finance Director. Are we keeping the impact fees segregated by year?
The town accounts for the impact fees, all of the development impact fees in a separate fund.
Segregated by year?
Well, our accounting records show them by year. There is tracking available within our software that shows when they were collected and when they're expended.
Okay, thank you.
And if I take it right, the law was changed in 2012. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of council, that's correct. The legislation is 2011, went into effect in 2012. There's some different time elements for different periods that, you know, may not be at issue, but the general effective date, I believe, was January 1st, 2012.
And before 2012, all the monies were separated in different impact fee funds. Is that correct also?
That's correct.
So all we're doing is, is we're taking the same procedure, but we just got a new start date, so to say, is 2012, and the new law changes.
The Senate bill passed in 2012. However, our ordinance was adopted by town council by, or in September of 2013, an early adoption. The Senate Bill 1525 allowed governments to adopt a new ordinance and come in compliance with that bill by July 31st, 2014. We were ahead of the game, however, we, the actual effect on the town's ordinance was not until 2013. It's just that bill passed in 2012, but our, we weren't required to have, be in full compliance with the bill until 2014.
So we went ahead and put ours in effect before the due date?
Several months early.
Right. Okay, with that, we have, we need a motion on our tentative budget.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I didn't see you, Karen. Excuse me.
I have a question about the total of the state-imposed expenditure limitation plus the 15 million that the voters approved. I understand that there are some exemptions from coverage by those amounts, but is there any way to tell how much less than the 15 million is being included in this budget?
Right now, including the carryovers that we had to carry forward from the prior year for projects that are unfinished, we're right at that limit.
Thank you.
Karen, what you asking for? You wanted to see it, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, can you get with her, with Councilman Wall, and give her that information so she can see it exactly?
Certainly will.
Thank you. Well, we do have, need a mo, do you have another question, Mike?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1527-15.
Second. We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 1527-15, which will set our physical impact tentative budget, which can be decreased, not increased, as we go along, and that budget amount will be 45 million with the carryovers, 45 million, 54,300 dollars. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Oh, go ahead, John.
I'd like to point out that the budget will be adopted, the final budget, on July 13th.
Yeah, but this is just a tentative. We can't go up, we can go down.
Yeah, thank you.
Need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ghaleen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here, I mean, yes.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Nay.
Mayor Rankin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion carries.
Item 4B, Discussion Approval Disapproval of Ratification of Change Order Number One, Garney Construction for the North Florence Reservoir Pump Station, in amount not to exceed $7,442 for a total budget cost not to exceed $1,723,442. Mayor, council, this item is for garney construction. They requested a change to contract for work that included reduction in the cost of a motor control and canopy, but they also needed an increase for a new manhole valve and valve lid for a connection to new pipe, to an existing pipe. The total overall increase is $7,442 on this item, and we do have employees from Public Works Department, if council has any other questions regarding this item.
Is this the last one?
Yes, sir. This should be the last one. This project is complete, I believe, after this.
Does any member of the council have any questions, or department head, or employees here? Now, are you sure this is the last one? Uh-oh, no, he hadn't either. I knew that.
The mayor and council, I apologize. My name's Jared Lee. I'm with Waterworks Engineers. We're the design engineer for this project, and I'm doing construction management on it as well. This is being constructed now. It's not complete yet, and there may be an additional change order. There was a mishap with the topographic survey of the site, and so we're still working through some issues regarding that. We wanted to get this one through so that the contractor has already performed this work, and it, and they want to be able to bill for the work that they've already performed. But the other work hasn't been completed yet and may be forthcoming.
Who made the mistake?
This time or the topographic?
Well, I want to know who made the mistake on the topograph.
The topographic, we were asked to use an old topographic survey from years ago, and it turned out that it was completely incorrect.
How much more are you planning on spending?
I don't have the total values with me at this time. There's a total of, I think, four more change orders that are in this that, but it's possible that we could save money elsewhere in the job and try to resolve that that way so that it won't have to come before the council necessarily. But I think that Mr. Mitchell had come and spoken to you last week about the Well 3B project, and as I think he said there, this job came in under the engineer's estimate, so there was, budget was available to cover these kind of things, and just the way that it was handled, you know, it has to come back before council, unfortunately, but we'll, we'll definitely, if this needs, if the next one needs to come forward, we'll be here to talk about that at this time.
Well, I think I can speak on behalf of the council. We're getting tired of seeing these extra monies being spent that weren't budget, or they could have been budgeted for, but we didn't realize what they were going to have to be spent for. I hope this is getting right to the end of it. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Is this a ratification?
Councilmember Ghaleen, Mayor, council, this one is a ratification on this item.
All right. Who directed you to use the old topographical map?
The design was performed, was done a few years ago. I'm not exactly sure who directed that at that time.
Have, a question, Mark. Have we done with our GPS, have we pretty well got everything we need to know about heights and elevations and so forth in Florence now? So we don't run into this problem again?
Well, mayor, members of the council, yes, I'm not involved in this project, so I will clarify, but for the most part, yeah, it's very uncommon for us to have problems of this type with any kind of survey work. So we have good topo, we have good information into the GIS system now, but, so I can't, I can't speak to this situation, but I know going forward, it's not something that is typical.
I'm talking about going forward. I'm not talking about the mistakes that's already done. We can't do anything about that except pay for them.
Mayor, council, I think I could, I could tell you, I think Wayne could confirm that we, that we have good information out there. We should be able to utilize that and not have these kinds of issues for the most part.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would tend to disagree with you. If it's not our mistake, why should we pay for it?
Well, it is our mistake because we're the one that gave them the map.
Well, no, we don't know that. He don't know where it came from.
Can anybody help me out on that?
Mayor, council, I believe the map did come from the Town of Florence. The project manager did provide that to the contractor to make their estimates on that program. It did come from the town.
Okay.
I was almost positive of that, but I want to hear somebody say it.
Well, I'd like to know who in the town gave them the wrong topo map.
We can find that out. Like I said, we can't go backwards, we can go forward.
But there needs to be accountability for the action that was caused.
Let's get a little more information on it. I agree with you, but we need to get some more information on it before we do anything.
We've been bringing this up for the last three months.
Well, maybe we're getting closer.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Change Order Number One with Garney Construction for the North Florence Reservoir Pump Station in amount not to exceed $7,442 for a total project cost not to exceed $1,723,442, and the authorization for the town manager to execute the change order.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to adopt or approve Change Order Number One with Garney Construction. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Ghaleen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Nay.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Walter.
Nay.
Mayor Rankin.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Item 4C, Discussion Approval Disapproval of Sending a Favorable Recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on behalf of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce's application for a special event, liquor license for July 18th, 2015, from 6:00 PM to midnight to host a casino night at the Holiday Inn Express and Suites.
I believe this is for the Chamber Casino Night at the Holiday Inn. We got their money and we got everything ready to send into DPS, right?
Yes, sir.
Does any member of the council have anything that I can discuss on this?
No.
Need a motion?
I make a recommendation that the council forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on behalf of Florence Chamber of Commerce. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D, Discussion Approval Disapproval of Filing a Blank Anexation Petition on the Proposed Bonnie Brook Solar Farm Anexation. Mr. Eckhoff.
Mayor, members of the council, at the last meeting, we spoke about bringing future annexation requests to you to get some more information, and this is one of, this is the first request that we're bringing forward to you based on that direction. This is an application that's already been filed with us. It was filed with us before we had the discussion at the last meeting. We've been going into this one in quite some detail. We have a legal description prepared. We have a legal description approved by Pinellas County for filing. We've done a lot of research. Also, the folks associated with this project have hired Elliot Pollack to prepare a fiscal impact analysis, so we're pretty comfortable with what the impacts will be, cost and the cost and the benefits of the annexation. So the annexation area itself is just about a half a square mile. Within the majority of that square mile is proposed a 50-megawatt solar project. The property owners would like to transfer the property over to Sun Power to do this project. We worked with Sun Power on the Ebrodrola project up north on Bella Vista. That actually sat on about 200 acres, and it was a 20-megawatt project, so this is twice as large as that project. This one is a little bit more similar in size and in the energy produced to the project that is about to start construction south of Anthem at Merrill Ranch. That is known as a sandstone solar project, and that's with S power, not to be confused with Sun Power. So in your report, there's a lot of information, and then ultimately, we're asking for a motion to direct staff to either go forward with the filing of the blank petition for the proposed Bonnie Brook Solar Farm annexation, or to not, or to not go forward with it. Cutting to the chase, there's a lot, again, there's a lot of information here. There's also, we just received a supplemental final report from Elliot Pollack. I think the conclusion from everything that we have is that staff would recommend going forward with the annexation. In fact, this is probably the type of annexation that is just right for the Town of Florence at this time because it generates substantial revenue primarily in years one and year two. That's from construction sales tax, that's from about having 150 employees on the site constructing this project over about a year duration, plus or minus, also in the permitting fees, and property tax that comes from the get-go on this project. So in the first year, there's an estimate of those fees collected during the construction process of close to $500,000. And then the overall impact just to the Town of Florence alone is about 1.3 million. Now, that's looking over a 35-year window. And with this project, let it be known that the property tax that we collect, it will be higher from the beginning, and it will go down over time as that's amortized, as the value of the project is amortized. They will not have a lot of employees working full-time on the site, so the good thing about solar projects is that they have a low impact to the town. They kind of sit there, and they don't need a lot of assistance. Checking with our police and fire department, we have not really had much of an impact at all from the existing projects that we have in town. They don't generate, since they don't have employees, they don't have, it's not a retail use where you have a lot of folks going to it, they don't have a lot of wear and tear on the transportation system, on the roadways. So the only thing to look at this is from a longer-term perspective, there are a couple of major roadways. Divergent Dam for one, and ultimately Quail Run Lane, which initially, if all of this, it may only be serving this project. It's going to have very low usage on it. Divergent Dam Road is there existing, going through the project. We would be able to get the right-of-way for Divergent Dam Road with this by the property being annexed, but we will take over the maintenance of these roadways, which will have some cost. Long-term, very long-term, as there's more development out there, ultimately, these roadways will be widened, and the cost of doing those widening and cost of maintenance will be something to consider. However, this project is, in itself, is never going to trigger the need to widen the roads. So the roads would only need to be widened in this area by other development causing that. And that typically, then in itself, you would look at that off-site development as having the impacts that are triggering the need for these improvements, and they would then contribute to, either in part or fully, to widening the roadways. So for example, say there was a 3,000-bed correctional facility that was located immediately east of the site. Well, we would look at what their impacts are to the roadway system, and they probably would then have to be doing off-site improvements to Quail Run and Divergent Dam, et cetera. And so this project in itself is not going to be in a position where it's causing those impacts to the roadways. It's just something in the report to think about. The other thing to think about is, while it doesn't generate a lot of employment, that does keep the cost, the cost down. The other benefit, too, is that this is a type of use that after the end of its lifespan, it can be easily removed from the property. We have no idea, none of us in the room, the solar professionals, et cetera, we don't know where the technology is going to be in 15, 20, 25, 30, especially 30, 35 years. We may find that we can produce 50 megawatts on 100 acres or less by that point. So the project can either stay as a solar farm and become more efficient over time, or if there is a calling to do higher and better uses on the property at that time, this is a use that can be dismantled, and the land can then be utilized for other employment and revenue-generating types of uses. So in essence, it almost acts as a holding zone for the property. So the property will stay relatively clean to allow other types of development in the future. So I can go into, I have more exhibits, and I can go into more detail into the reports, but coming from us, our recommendation is favorable, and that's talking with the police and fire department and public works department as well. We feel comfortable going forward with this annexation. We feel like it will have a positive impact, and it's probably just exactly the type of annexation that would be beneficial to us now.
Does any member of the council have any questions or more?
Where is the cost of the road widening eventually going to be coming from exactly?
Well, Vice Mayor, mayor, members of the council, I do address that in the report, and then ultimately, if we do need to look at roads being widened, there are mechanisms for that. There could be an improvement district that was created, and if we get 51 percent or more of the property owners willing to participate, then that cost would be borne by the adjacent property owners. That's one possibility. The other possibility is transportation impact fees, general fund monies that go into programming a project like that through the CIP. But I think the more likely scenario is that there's really not a need to widen those roadways until there's additional development, and that additional development that would be in the area is what would pay for the cost of widening those roadways.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure, and, you know, just so it's on the record, I'm really not a fan of the improvement district fees, just because of the implications they can cause down the line, especially when one wants to undo them.
I think you've just given examples of what we could do with it.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If I understand this right, this power that's going to be generated is going to be sold to SRP?
No, that isn't, my understanding that the SRP will be transmitting it.
Yes, yes. So I think Sun Power may want to come up and address that from a more technical perspective, but from, well, you know what, I think it would be better just to have them do that before I address that incorrectly.
Thanks, Mark. Mayor, council, so the answer to that question, now, I think it's important to know that this is a real project. We have signed- We have signed a contract with a Fortune 100 company to purchase the project. As far as your question regarding SRP, yes, this is an SRP line that runs just north of the project adjacent to the property, so that power will be delivered to SRP.
Now, will we get any sales tax out of this?
So, that, that's in the Elliot Pollak report, and I, and I don't want to dig into that right now. But there'll be construction sales tax along with property tax.
I'm talking about the, the sales, whenever you put that electricity on the SRP line, I'm assuming they're going to pay you for that.
So, I, I don't know the ins and outs of that. So, Sun Power, we're developing this project. We've contracted to sell it to a Fortune 100 company, and then we'll build it. But we're not involved in the transaction with, with SRP. So, I don't, I actually don't know how the taxes work.
Mark, do you understand what I'm asking?
Such a, like a franchise fee.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the report that we, that we were provided by Elliot Pollak does not get into that particular component. It gets into construction sales tax, application fees, review fees, fees from second, secondary revenue fees from employment, the commercial property tax. It does not get into whether there is a, a fee collected by virtue of SRP utilizing that energy to sell to, to another entity. That's certainly something that we can look at. It's, it's interesting because they, it's not SRP's service area, and they will not be using the power in, in our service area. So, I'm not sure if that, if that is going to be applicable, but we can have, we can have the consultant look at, look at that matter.
Well, that'd be something you, in the development agreement that you come up with us for later, right?
We would definitely, well, Mayor, members of the council, if we go forward with this, if not sooner, we can address that, the response to that question to you when we come forward or, or sooner. But on everything else though, we have, there, there is a projected impact to the town of Florence of the 1.3 million. I will note, so we want to really think about the impact to the town of Florence, obviously. The impact to Pinellas County, and these are over the 35 years of the project, is about 5.6 million. To the Florence Unified School District, about 5.8 million, million. To the Flood Control District, 1.7. Then there are other taxing districts that receive a benefit, about 1.5 million. So, it, it does also benefit, benefit other entities that collect a, a property tax from.
Let's clarify that, that that's a favorable impact to Florence, so that people won't think that we are going to be on the hook for that. So, let's restate that.
Absolutely.
So that they will know that we are, can, we will reap those benefits rather than expend that.
Yes, those are, those, those are favorable, yes, those are, those are favorable impacts. Those are, those are funds that are collected for the town and then for those other entities. Absolutely, thank you.
In the meeting earlier today with them, I, I found out they will do everything they can to hire people from Florence during the construction phase. They're not guaranteeing anybody a job, just the opportunity to put an application in and be evaluated to see if they can go to work for them. So, that's going to be, you know, we can do a job fair, whatever we need to do to get the word out to the people that the jobs will be there for. They're temporary jobs, but they're jobs for a while.
I was just going to make a comment again, Mark. You said that the electrical power itself is not going to be sold within the city limits, correct, or the town limits?
Councilmember Gulline, Mayor Council. So, the, the project produces the energy, energy. There's a, there's a substation, and then it goes to a SRP substation. And then, and then that, that power then goes, goes to the grid. And whether that power ends up particularly going down one line to this subject property or not is, is, is to be debated. But it does get allotted for a particular project that's proposed north of us, so.
Right. So, what, what we're basically saying is, and you have to look at the sales tax code, because there's a lot of restrictions on how you can tax solar power. There's many exemptions for solar power. Also, you can only tax on the amount that's used within your, your particular town limits. So, it's not that every single kilowatt of electricity going through can be taxed, it's just on the usage itself.
I think that, that'd be hard to keep up with, because once it goes on the grid, you know, how do you know where, where the electricity's coming from?
That's exactly right. But you have to refer back to the tax code that's written, a common tax code for the whole state of Arizona, and look at the parameters of solar energy and what can be taxed and what can't.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's a good project going forward.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Now, I don't think we need to hear any more. All we're doing tonight is to, if we want to, is to go ahead with the annexation process. Till Mark and them, Lisa can get all the paperwork started.
I'll make a motion to approve going forward with the annex, annexation petition for the Bonnybrook Solar Farm Annexation.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to go forward the annexation process for the proposed Bonnybrook Solar Farm Project. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I want a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Gulline?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Wall?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Mayor Rankin?
Yes. Motion passes. Hi to me.
Discussion approval disapproval to authorize town manager to enter into a contract and award all bids associated with the Main Street State Route Highway 79 project. Mayor, council, the project behind us, the Main Street Extension, the completion of the majority of the roadway was completed by Vices Construction here about three months ago. The town has been working with ADOT probably since the end of last year, and got, got approval on a traffic impact analysis in March of this year. When we bid this project out and it was approved by council, that was one portion that was not, not included as part of it, because we could not get ADOT approval, and ADOT has different requirements than we do, and a different permit and process that we have to walk through. However, at this point in time, we are coming to you to seek authorization. Low Mountain, who is your contractor on the facilities to the west, is going to be completing the southern extension of the Main Street, which hooks Main Street Extension to First Street. And they're going to be completing that, which is in the current contract for that project. So, what we are asking you is to go ahead and move forward and authorize Low Mountain, while they're deploying to do this piece, to complete the northern portion at the same time. That way, there is fewer costs, and we can get this all completed. And the time schedule that is included in your package shows that the pavement will all be laid by June 30th, and striping will be finalized on July the 2nd. Now, this entire project was approved by town council for a total amount of $700,000. To this date, the town has obligated $352,844. And now, the staff is requesting an additional $94,116, which would be under the budget of $700,000 by $253,039.42.
So, in other words, this will connect up to 79 and bring it in, into the Main Street?
Yes, sir.
And that'll complete that road at this time, where the trees ready to go in at a later date and so forth?
That is correct, sir.
Any questions?
The total cost, the way I read it here, we're going to, instead of the $700,000, we're only going to be spending, well, not only, but we're going to be spending $446,000 instead of $700,000.
Senator Hawkins, that's right.
So, we'll, we're coming in $253,000 less than what we originally approved, okay?
Councilmember Hawkins, Mayor, council, that is basically due to your public work staff, who did a lot of the dirt work early, at the end, at the end of last year and early this year.
And I think it also goes with Low Mountain for giving us a better bid, because they'll have the equipment here to finish this end of it, so they might. And I want to thank Low Mountain for everything they've done on this project and to help the town. Any other, John, do you have a question?
Yes, what about street lights?
Councilmember Anderson, Mayor, council, that street is not going to have any lights at this point in time. I have been working with Mr. Ekoff to work with signage coming off of Highway 79. We have to be careful as to what ADOT will allow us to do at this point in time. It is considered a reliever road, so we're going to have a lot of traffic going through it. We've got to be careful as far as the speed limit and those type of things. As the mayor did say, there will be some irrigation and some trees going in. We can bring back a plan later, and we can work with Mr. Ekoff and Public Works to see how, to what extent ADOT would allow us to do lighting on that street. But this does not include it at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Need a motion?
I'd like to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract and award all bids associated with the Main Street State Route 79 project.
Second. We have a motion to second to authorize the town manager enter, enter into a contract and award all bids associated with the Main Street State Route 79 project. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Second call to the public. Anybody in the public have anything they'd like to comment on, say? Seeing no movement, a closed call to the public. Call to the council, John?
Yeah, I would like to thank all the people that are here tonight. Thank you for putting up with our long meeting and the plays that we had. It's always good to have you folks here. It's a lot to us up here, thank you.
Karen?
I echo what John just said. Thank you all for coming and being so patient.
Becky?
I don't have anything tonight.
Yep.
Yeah, it's already been said.
I don't have anything else to add.
Karen?
I do. I'll turn my microphone on. Many of you are probably wondering why I voted no on the tentative budget. Well, the reason why I voted no on a tentative budget is because there's still some issues that I brought up even going back as far as 2012 that hadn't been addressed. So, I understand that all cities and towns are required by law to adopt an annual budget. However, I strongly disagree with the manner in which this budgetary process occurred, and I have several issues with the budget that unfortunately at this time are too complex to properly address with this upcoming fiscal year. As a result, I did vote no regarding the adoption of the town of Florence tentative budget. My concerns for the budget are as follows. The first part is the 3% average merit-based stipend, which is in a salary increase. While I understand that wanting to add the salary base for the upcoming year, the town needs to remember that merit raises didn't occur from 2007 to 2010. For those years, individuals received no raises and therefore are lower in their salaries for others who worked before that for the town. This will count as another freeze impacting towards their retirement. I also have a question as how this will impact retention of employees, which will cause additional costs in the form of needing to search for qualified employees, training those employees, and again, retaining those employees. Also, while on the subject of the compression pay scale that was enacted in 2012, there are several issues that have not been addressed and are growing more severe with each year. I've also heard flaws with our merit systems, such as comments like the merit system works great for people who give themselves high marks, whereas workers have been told we can't give you fives because that would leave no room for improvement. They are the lowest in their salary position. It was also reported that a supervisor was given back an employee review because nobody can have a perfect score, and was directed to change it. As a council member, I've seen department heads across the board get full 4% to 5% increases while the average employee is 2.5% to 3%. We all have the information, and it's public information for anyone who's interested. Furthermore, as these increases occur on the top administrative end, it is further adding to a gap and causing more of a discrepancy that will need to be addressed in the near future. In regards to Mr. Choppal, I also had the same concern with our parks and rec budget. We are having an increase of approximately $570,000 in the parks and rec budget, whereas if you look at your police and fire, there's a decrease of $100,000. It's been brought up during that process of the Prop 407 to cut police and fire budgets, which ultimately would account for the nearly $570,000 increase to parks and rec for the opening of the community center, which is not yet complete. The residents pay insurance premiums, which are part of, partly based from an ISO rating. Now, if we were to cut services to the fire department, for examples, the town is in danger of dropping our ISO numbers, which means the residents will pay up to several thousand dollars more per year in their home insurance. We're currently at a level four by eight tenths of a point, and by cutting budgets and public safety, we would ultimately be costing our citizens more money on the insurance rates, not to mention potentially sacrificing their safety. For this evening, I'm not going to go into the tax base, but that's for another day. I do want to thank everybody for their time and coming to the meeting, and especially your patience while we had an extended executive session.
Hard to follow that. I can tell you this though, there was never any mention unless the bond or the special action failed of cutting the police or fire department. We are not cutting services to the area, period, end of story. As far as the salaries, the 3% stipend, it's just, to me, it's a little bit, that's all. I wish we could give them all a raise, but there's no way in heck we can. And you know that as well as I do. So, calling what we've done to try to help the employees a little bit, I think is very, very fortunate that we can even do that and not have to raise taxes to the people. There were no taxes raised in Florence this year.
Well, we haven't had any layoffs either.
That's exactly true, Bill. We're not going backwards. We're going to stay at the same keel or go a little bit farther ahead. Now, I want to tell you, July the 4th is coming up, American Independence Day. We're going to have a celebration here. We're going to open the Aquatic Center, and it's open to everybody. It is not limited to people that live in their own homeowners association. They can come to our party. Hope they do. Hope they come down and watch the fireworks. Hope they come down and go swimming, go down those slides. I think Bill's going to go down the slide. I don't know about that. But we can all enjoy what we have built here in Florence. There's some, something that we've been proud of to put up here for the citizens of this community, not just the downtown area, but the whole community. And I want everybody to come out and enjoy the festivities. We've got races, we've got swimming events, we've got all kinds of events that are going to go on. Brian's come on board and put on a heck of a show. Yes, our entertainment avenue budget has gone up, and it may go up again next year. We don't know what that thing's going to cost. It could come down. But darn it, these kids of Florence, Arizona need a break. And we have sat on our doves for many years and not done it, and it's time to do it now. We've done it, let's go ahead and be proud of it. Brian's going to be cutting, we're going to keep the charges minimal so that the people can enjoy it. If we lose $200,000, $300,000 on providing entertainment to Florence, that's what their taxpayers' money goes for. I, you know, I, I don't understand what the animosity towards that park is from the, from some of the people that live in the Anthem area. It aggravates the heck out of me, because we are one community and one community only, and it's Florence, Arizona. It's not Anthem, it's not Florence Gardens, it's not the Old Town. We are Florence. So, don't get up here on your, like me, get on your high horse and talk about all the bad things we're doing when we are doing good things. Go around and look at some of the other communities, Tara, not only Florence. You go to Eloy, you go to Coolidge, you go to Casa Grant, and you see what they provide to their kids. Need a motion to adjourn, please?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to second adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're adjourned.